Okay, we'll call over to the regular city council meeting Monday, February 12th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Michelle Otto.
Kirby Moyno, Sam Solars.
David Paradise.
Jessica Bonnywell.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Jackie Hunt.
Invocation.
Well, God, we thank you for this moment of silence before we started. I know it's sometimes uncomfortable, but sometimes it's just very good for us to be still for a moment. We thank you for this beautiful winter weather that has allowed us to do all kinds of things other than plow and shovel and salt and maybe fish or snowmobile. And we thank you that you give us the freedom to gather and organize and be government around groups of people that we call towns for the common good, and we're thankful for this group that leads us, continue to guide and direct them in the business of being a city together. We're thankful for our first responders and their constant commitment to our care and safety. Bless this meeting and all who are here. Amen.
Thanks, Kathy. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second. Further discussion? I'll vote aye, Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes four zero. Wright County Sheriff's Office.
How you guys doing? Haven't been here yet. Deputy Austin Brown, working on my second year at the sheriff's office. I've only been here for maybe a couple, couple weeks at most in Montrose. Still getting the feelers out for everybody in the city and along with Waverly, too. So since beginning of January, it's been pretty busy. Montrose had like 323 calls per service, and then Waverly's had 158. I've had five arrests in Montrose and three arrests in Waverly. Little shy of 70 traffic stops, it looks like. Couple things that have been like a hot topic lately, like juvenile complaints. Just took one out in Waverly. Guess there's kids like smoking cigarettes and stuff in town and just kind of causing general kid trouble. So really keeping an eye out for that. Try to put a, put the brakes on all that stuff happening in the cities. Some traffic complaints been coming in, just speeding, general speeding everywhere. So I'd like to bump those traffic stop numbers up personally and try to make the city a little safer for pedestrians. I know it's getting nicer out, so people are gonna be running and walking outside and kids are gonna be playing, so definitely gonna cut down the speeding and whatnot. Any questions for me?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Nice to meet you guys.
You too.
City Council.
Council meeting, workshops, celebrate Montrose, royalty meetings, fireman's dinner, pancake breakfast. That's it.
Head, City Council, EDA, Community Ed, which you also had, Michelle.
Oh, that's right.
Chamber meeting, had a meeting with the Mayor of Waverly and State Rep McDonald about some wastewater treatment plant funding, the council workshop, and a meeting with the representative from Senator Amy Kolbisher's office about wastewater treatment plant funding.
Planning and zoning workshop, fireman's dinner, and elected leaders conference.
City Council, workshop, fire department dinner, fire department meeting, pancake breakfast, and EDA.
Fire Department?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet is the activity report for January. Off to a slow start of 2024, which we're thankful for. Hopefully it stays that way for the rest of the year, so otherwise not a whole lot to really hit on with that other than something else I have in the agenda here, so. Next item is I would like authorization to apply for the fiscal year 2023 Assistance to Firefighter Grant. We're gonna try for the SCBA's one last time. There is a 5% match, I believe. It won't go anywhere near that $20,000 that's in the agenda. If we're awarded this grant, it will not cover 100% the cost of an SCBA, but it knocks it down, so we're paying pennies on the dollar for an SCBA. So if an SCBA is $9,000, they may only give us an allowance for like $6,000 or $7,000 for that SCBA, so we're getting them cheaper. And anytime we can get free money, we'll take it, so. I'd like authorization to do that and be advised of the match when it's all said and done.
I'm all for free money, so I mean, who do you guys use for your grant writing again? Do you do it all?
Not anymore. That's the next item. I will if you don't authorize the second one, but.
Well, that puts us in a predicament then, otherwise you have to write them. I'll make a motion to authorize submission of an application for the FY 2023 Assistance to Firefighters Grant to cover the costs of new SCBA's.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
And then this, if we're awarded this, the plan would be to pay off the financing that we have already set up since we already took delivery of them. This is kind of like that gray area where we can do it this one last time and then we're kind of out of luck trying for grants for it. So that's why we ended up doing that financing thing with the SCBA's, was to give us this last opportunity. So if we are awarded, we'll pay that off first and be done with that essentially with that and then finish off the grant, so.
Any other discussion? I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Next item is to authorize the use of a grant writer for grant writing services. His cost is $600. He prepares and assists with the execution if awarded, so essentially if we get awarded it, he's in my pocket to help with all the paperwork and everything like that. The person that we use is Neil Mirhafer. He's from like the St. Joe area, I believe. He did a great job for us last year. Unfortunately, we weren't awarded, so we're hoping maybe this year's the right year. So $600 is pretty cheap for grant writing services when you look at some of the other grant writing services that are out there. He only does assistant firefighter grants is all he does, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize for a grant writer services for the 2023/2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye, Ms. Otto.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Next item is to authorize radio service and maintenance and new fleet mapping for all of our portable, mobile, and base radios. We use Ancom out of Burnsville for our radio services. Basically, this is a software upgrade for all of our radios, kind of tweaking what channels are where and things along those lines as well. The exact cost is not known at this point. I'm guessing it's probably gonna be right around that $10,000 figure by the time we're all said and done. Hopefully it'll come in a little less. We do have that money budgeted in our communications line every year to cover costs for such as this. Most of the radios that we have, some of them being 15 years old, have never been touched, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to authorize for service and new fleet mapping to all mobile, portable, and base radio units.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes four zero.
Then I'd just like to take a second to recognize the firefighter of the year who was recognized at our annual dinner this la, or two Saturdays ago. The firefighters select the firefighter of the year. We have a committee that does the selection. This year, they selected Alan Mortensen, who's been on our department for about 28 years now. Greatly well-deserved for that. He puts a lot of time, energy, and effort especially into the relief side of things, but he also is very dedicated to coming for calls and helping out around the station and stuff. And then we also recognized our top responders. Top responders who respond to over 60% of all of our calls are recognized every year at our dinner. This year, those that were recognized were Mike Markington, David Paradise, Kelly Stoll, and Joseph Bon Toma. So I just wanted to give a special shout out to all those guys and thank them, so. Other than that, that's all I got for you, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, Kevin. EDA?
We had a meeting on January 16th. Couple things we'll get into after this, but we talked about Matt Smith, who no longer works for CCC, so having him removed. We didn't, most of the meeting was about the TIF request through JP Brooks. We talked with Shannon Sweeney, and we had the attorney on line as well with us, but kind of walked through some of our kind of concerns we had with that, but also with the recommendation to move forward with the planning of the TIF request for them, for this development. And then lastly, we did approve for a new member to join in Matt Smith's place, so we have two, two motions to make here on the EDA. Correct?
I'll make a motion then to remove Matt Smith from the EDA.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
I'll make a motion to approve new member Gabby Stroud.
Stroud.
I'll second that. Further discussion?
Where's she, she's just, she's a resident in town, right?
Yeah, lives in town, has an LLC that helps.
Daycare.
Daycares that, to get funding and training and advocates for, you know, all things that daycares need, especially people that are starting up their daycares, correct?
Mm-hmm. Good.
No other discussion. I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Planning and zoning.
Mayor and Council, last planning and zoning meeting was January 10th. They did new officer appointments, which we'll do next, and then the other business they talked about was just some 2024 upcoming issues that they may have to deal with, with cannabis legalization, maybe changing some zoning rules with that. Another issue that we discussed was corporate, single-family home rentals, how businesses, LLCs, groups of, of people are getting together to buy up people's houses and turn them into rental properties. It's taking a little slice of things out of the market, the naturally affordable homes, naturally affordable something, homes, naturally occurring, occurring affordable housing. There it is. And so it's taking some of that out, so just kind of something to keep an eye on in case we start getting a lot of that. They're coming into some communities where a developer is coming in and building a brand-new development, and they're all gonna be rentals under one company, so. Some cities are dealing with some issues there. We also have some FEMA updates with their flood plane. Our planner, Mr. Gritman, is getting in touch with the DNR to see if there's a whole lot we need to do with that. We may need to change some ordinance things and some mapping as far as that goes. So just some items to keep an eye on for the next year. And then the next things were just the officer appointments. They recommended for the chair Chuck Smallwood, Charles Smallwood, for vice chair Roger Froman, and for secretary Sylvia Henry. Those are all the same appointments they had last year. Nothing really changed. I think we just do one motion to approve the new officer appointments.
I'll make a motion to approve the officer appointments for 2024 planning and zoning.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Park and Rec.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. So we have the January 9th Park and Rec's meeting minutes. We right now have a completed draft outline of the Parks and Rec Trail Plan, so it's not formatted to be extra fancy. It is all the information there. We are looking for probably some funds to reach out. We've made preliminary contact for other consulting services through our interaction with the Buffalo Parks and Rec Director. We sent out a request for kind of assistance in formatting and kind of having that final plan. We haven't heard anything back, so we just kind of continued on with finishing this outline. So now the hopes is to at least have this final document, reach out to these consulting companies, and if Council so chooses to spend a little bit money to make them a little bit fancier, a little, possibly, most likely not interactive, but at least formatting, scale, table of contents, all nicely queued together. We have our holiday decorating contests. We had some signage for Forest Creek Parks. All of our updated, I believe our garden rules are all squared away now. We are currently working on our volunteer youth program. Probably gonna be prepping that. We have all of our kind of applications and going through the League of Minnesota Cities requirements for, you know, volunteer protocols along those lines for starting it in the garden and then hopefully having it all squared away before we can carry over into winter to see if anyone needs any assistance like shoveling and that kind of thing. We're working on updating our pamphlets and working the motion to moving forward with the grant application for the Minnesota Twins Grant as well. Those are the, our Parks and Rec meetings from January, so I guess I would be requesting a motion to have some funds available to, when I'm reaching out to these consulting services for like formatting, to be able to offer at least some kind of compensation.
What are you anticipating that cost being?
I am hoping under $500.
Any thoughts on that?
I think it'd be a good idea to have somebody format it correctly and some displays.
I feel like it's a one-time thing.
Yeah.
You know, when we have to update this again, they can use this new format and it will adjust from there, so I think the cost is worth it.
So we're saying up to $500, I would assume?
I would more or less have them get some quotes, I would say. I don't know what the cost of these things are nowadays, but, you know, I don't want to handcuff them if it is over, all the quotes are over $500 and then they can't move forward, you know? I think Josh could make the smart decision here on not picking somebody that's $5,000.
Three, three bid, three bid process? Yeah, I can, I can definitely reach out now that we, you know, have at least, it sounds like some council approval to sway some consultants, hopefully a little bit easier.
Yep. I think if we want to just motion to have them go out and look for the bids and then we can approve the bids after that. I'm fine with that. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, does, does it need to be an official bid process?
No, 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 not by any means.
We're just saying that Josh or whoever else is gonna go out and get two or three different people that'll say, "I'll charge you $600. This is some of my work."
Yeah.
Yep.
And then that way they can talk about who's, you know, what format they like the best.
Sounds good.
You wanna word that motion then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for Park and Rec to go out and gather bids to update the park and trails with outside services.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes four zero.
Next on the docket, we have our officer appointment recommendations. That would be Kayla McCloskey as secretary, Eddie Kalash's vice chair, and myself as chair.
Motion again?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion then to approve all appointments for officers for Park and Rec.
I'll second. Further discussion?
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Council, we would also like to request you make a motion for approving our new member Valerie Parker to the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve Valerie Parker as a new Park and Rec member.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
And then we have holiday decorating contest winners. We have in third place the residents of 135 Mindy Lane.
No.
Second place, 320 Center Street Avenue South, and then first place, 221 Quail Drive. Second? All right. We'll take it. Thank you. Thank you for participating.
Here you guys go. Congratulations. They were all great, so.
Thank you.
Congrats, guys.
Thanks. Did you say ludifisk? Oh, my gosh. I could just smell it after you said that.
Yeah, thank you, holiday contestants, and. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
City engineer?
Evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet this evening is the final pay estimate and change order for the 2023 street improvement project. We've received all of the lien waivers and appropriate documents from the contractor. The project is ready to close out, and we are recommending approval of the pay estimate and change order. The pay estimate amount is $27,021.77. I should note that the change order actually just reconciles the contract price, the overall contract. The cost of the improvements is below the original approved contract amount, so it's just a reconciling exercise for accounting purposes, so.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the final pay application and change order number one for the 2023 street improvement project.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
And that's all I had this evening, unless Council had questions of me.
Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, Jared.
Public Works. Mayor and Council, first thing on the docket under Public Works is looking to get approved to fill the position of the maintenance worker one. After receiving 18 applications, interviewing five, I am recommending the approval to hire Jason Ramthun to the maintenance worker one position that is vacant at a rate of $28 an hour.
You gonna say that name again?
Jason Ramthun.
I'll make a motion to approve Jason to be hired as a maintenance worker one.
I'll second.
Not gonna try it if he butchered it. Further discussion?
Is he local? He is, isn't he?
Yeah, I mean, he lives on 25, I believe.
Yeah.
I met him at the pancake breakfast.
What's that?
He's at the pancake breakfast on Sunday.
Oh, okay.
Any other discussion? Ms. Otto?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Mayor and Council, number two on your list is, there was a quote included in your packet that I got last year from Magic Turf Field Restoration Company for work to be done on a cover field, on the infield specifically. And there's, I don't know if you looked at it, there's multiple things that'll be done with this. Also to let you know that it's part of the total project of constructing, taking care of the fence in the field that was approved in the CIP Plan, General Projects Fund 401. Currently, there's $140,000 in there that was set aside for this project. I'm looking to get that approved, and I'll take any questions you got on it.
Any questions for Danny?
Is there a timeline yet or no?
What's that?
Do you have a timeline?
No, I mean, I have to call them up and we have to set a meeting, and then they'll kind of let me know. I figured I'd get council approval before I have them come out, so.
And this bid won't change much, I would assume? They, just because it was, you know, four or five months ago?
Well, I took a bid for 2024, but not changing much. I, we're gonna try to stay within this bid, but we don't know what we're gonna find when we start bidding it up.
Right, right, depending on issues that come.
Right. The goal is to stay under total project cost. And what I mean by that is infield and fence.
So do you want to bid to like not to exceed $40,000?
I can't, I can't.
Do you want to bid not to exceed $40,000 since it's $36,000?
Sure, that would be great. That gives me a little lenience without having to come back to council.
I'll make a motion then to approve the Magic Turf bid not to exceed $40,000 for cover field. I'll make a motion then to approve, um, the Magic Turf bid not to exceed forty thousand dollars for cover field.
I'll second that. Further discussion. And I just, this, so they're going to make sure that it is all done and leveled off at the end of it, because, because, like I said when we had talked earlier, that they mentioned only two to three inches of dirt, but I know that that lip is six inches in some places.
Yeah, I mean, we got to start by leveling it out, so I don't know exactly, like, this bid could go higher, you know, we might have to go further down with the egg lime. This was just a, kick the dirt around, I met him last year. You know, rough bid, we didn't tear into it, but the goal of it is to get that lip taken care of. Now, it might, obviously, if you look at the bid, there's going to be some sodding that needs to be done too, so it might be adding some to the, the transition to the L field. All depends, I know we didn't have to kick very far in the egg lime to get down the clay. That's what I could tell you. So, uh, Magic Turf is highly recommend we do this and then when we do do it, that we do it every four to five years.
When was the, when was the last time it was done?
Uh, I've worked here twenty-two years and I've never seen it done.
Alls they've ever done in the past was basically an order of the egg lime, threw it on top and shoveled it out.
I was also informed by Magic Turf that we are using below standard egg lime.
Yeah.
So.
It's not baseball field.
Which is news to me. It's the egg lime we've always ordered, but, I mean, there's going to be some changes, right, so. The goal is it to get it looking way better than what it does. Mind you, this is not a baseball field. I mean, for little kids, yeah, adults. This is a softball, little kids' field. But it is the only field the City of Montrose has. So we got to start somewhere.
Any other discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
She passes four zero.
Mayor council, the number three thing is a kind of a continuation, um, it is a quote from, uh, Town and Country Fence. To replace the entirety of the fence, including backstop. Now, I did have them break the quote out into three different projects. Not knowing what the CIP plan was going to be approved for, but it looks like we can knock all this out in one shot. Um, the total on it is ninety thousand, five seventy-five. Again, I'm looking to get like a blanket on it, beans there's a hundred and forty put aside, you approve forty, I'd like to have you approve the hundred for the fence, in case there's other things we run into. Um, there might need to be some concrete work done additionally to the backstop, um, that's kind of why I want to lump that in there. Um, these two companies do work together a lot. From what I was told when I got these quotes last summer, Town and Country and Magic Turf, I mean, multiple projects throughout the state. Um, the plan is, once you guys approve, hopefully approve everything here, is to get a joint meeting between them and Public Works and I and out of the field and come up with more timeline and I'll keep the council in the loop when we know , uh, the project extent, but I'm looking to get approved for the quote, the entirety of the quote from Town and Country. I'll take any questions you got on that.
Price does re, include removal, correct?
Run that by me again?
Does that include removal?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Town and Country Fence quote not to exceed a hundred thousand.
Okay, I'll second that. Further discussion. After we have the new infield and fencing, can we paint the dugouts, uh, nice and bright color maybe?
Whatever color you want.
Brown again?
They were blue.
Why is it not blue?
Thing is, I'm going to tell you right now, when they were blue, graffiti stood out a lot. When they're brown, it's hard for them to, but darker colors I recommend, but we can paint them whatever color you want.
Further discussion on the fencing?
Um, yeah, I guess while we're discussing it, I may also bring it up to you guys now, there's a little shed there for equipment. That shed will be ripped out. Because the fence goes around the shed, but that, that's, we, we don't have equipment to store in that shed, we don't have a drag machine. And right now that fence actually stops at the shed and then continues on the other side. We can't, we don't have the room there to pull the fence out because of the baselines and the fall territories. So that shed will most likely have to get removed, I just want to get, let you guys know that.
Where's the equipment for?
Equipment will have to go in the other shed, there ain't much equipment in there.
It's just rakes and a choker and?
Pretty much, couple, couple base pads, uh, some base anchors, base plugs.
And you just want to add that into the concessionary?
Yeah.
It's sitting over by the dugout.
Drags will just sit outside.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So then Public Works would be the only ones that would drag it, I would take it then?
No. I mean, if people want to drag it, if they have terms, they more than welcome, but we're not going to leave a twenty thousand dollar lawnmower sitting up there for.
Right, that's why I asked, if Public Works is going to be the one that they'd go up there and drag it a couple times a week.
Well, we do during the week, but if it's used all weekend. What I'm telling you is I, if you guys want to pay guys overtime to drag during weekend games.
I'm not asking about the weekend, but I just.
Oh, we always take care of it during the week.
I just want to make sure that everything needed for anybody who uses it, that one, if we're putting all this money into it, that whether it's community ed, private groups, that they put it back the way that it was when they are done with it.
Well, there'll be rakes and I could get some hand drakes, and if they want to bring their own equipment or you guys want to buy a drag machine, we could talk about that. Um, before it was an old retired Ford lawnmower that was in there from the parks and it blew up, so.
It didn't start half the time before that either.
Right, I mean, and those drag machines are not cheap.
No, and it wouldn't make sense for it only to be used a few times, you know, throughout the year, you know, six weeks.
I guess the biggest thing is, I just ask people to, you know, fill in your home plate and drag around your bases and your base lines. Uh, like rake them when they're done and it'll be just fine, but a lot of people don't.
Well, and that's, I mean, as, as you know, being involved in, you know, the, the Howard Lake Association and everything, that they, when you're done, you are required, and everybody else does it too. Dallinow, Watertown, Hutchinson, you're done, you take the bases out, put the plugs in and you rake in the high areas, but I just want to make sure that it's, they do that and we're not going to put this money into it and then everybody goes out there and it's just.
Yeah, I think we'll have to set up, maybe we'll talk with Park and Rec and set up some game, some rules and regs that people have to follow. That'll be posted somewhere.
I would, I would assume Buffalo does that too on their fields.
They include that like the community ed contract, some revenge or something in there.
Yep. I don't disagree.
What happens if they don't?
Then I guess you kick them off the field, I don't know.
Because, I mean, the only people that use it is community ed.
Uh, not necessarily.
For the majority.
Right. You do have a tournament there.
Yeah.
Um, and a summer. Yeah.
My husband does it on that one for that September tournament.
So, I mean, I don't disagree with you, but if you don't stick the money into the field, whether people are going to abuse it or not, it needs it.
Well, and I'm not arguing against putting the money into it, I just want to make sure that if they're using it, that they'll put a little bit of care into it as well.
Hopefully people will respect the parks, uh, especially when they use it. I think to have, uh, have some rules and have some punishment, if they break the rules, it would be, probably be a good thing. Something we can have a Park and Rec meeting about or just throw it in there and have Park and Rec come up with some rules. See how it turns out first, right?
Yeah, that works.
Any other discussion on the fencing? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Uh, mayor council, item number four. Yeah, I know, this is tough. I'm asking to buy a new snow blower. Um, the only reason why is, again, it's part of the CIP plan under, uh, Public Works Fleet Fund. Um, it was due to be replaced in twenty twenty-four, so. Um, thankfully, we didn't get a lot of snow this year and the one we got, but I don't think if we would have got snow like we normally do, I don't think the one we have would have lasted, so. Just trying to get ahead of the curve, following the plan here. Um, we did get this quoted last year and the price has stayed the same. Uh, I don't know if it'll stay the same. He didn't say, he definitely said it will not get cheaper, so this is the blower for the utility tractor itself. Which we need for some certain sidewalks that the Bobcat don't fit down. And I'll take any questions you got, but I'm looking to get approval, um, in the plan. We set aside fifteen thousand, if you look at the quote, it's twelve thousand, nine hundred, so we're definitely below what we set aside.
What do we do with the old attachment?
We're going to keep it as a backup. Uh, there's only two snow blowers that fit John Deere, it's John Deere and this Pronovost, which the Public Works guys feel is a better blower than the John Deere blower. So, we're going to give it a whirl. I know it's hard to approve when there's no snow, but eventually there will be.
We don't get snow here.
We got an inch coming on Thursday. Oh, boy.
Then we might want to get this one soon then.
I'll make a motion to approve, um, the snow blower attachment for twelve thousand, nine hundred.
I'll second. Further discussion. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Uh, number five, updates or any questions? The only update I got is I'm ready for the Twins Grant app, I'm waiting on the letter of recommendation.
Yeah, I, I made a note to follow up with her tomorrow.
I sent an email today.
Did you?
So, I mean, I'm ready to rock and roll on that, uh, and I'll take any questions you got for Public Works right now, otherwise I have nothing else.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, old business, compost site camera image update.
Mayor council, after the workshop on the twenty-ninth, uh, staff were, worked together to test the cameras out at the compost site and it looks like they will work for what we need them to, so I think we can just go with that for now and if something happens or if we're getting chronic, uh, illegal dumping or something out there, we can discuss it further, but I think we're good to go the way it is. Yeah?
Thank you.
Alright.
Can I give an update, Dan? Uh, Kim from Community Ed, she'll get you. She replied. He apologizes.
You're saying down over here?
Kim from Community Ed said you should have it tomorrow. You should have it tomorrow.
Okay.
I to my email.
Perfect. I got till, I believe, March first to get it in, so. And I'm ready to roll, all I got to do is attach it, so that'd be great, thank you.
Alright, new business, celebrate Montrose.
There's nobody here.
Okay, uh, ARPA funds update.
Mayor and council, uh, included in your packet, there is an ARPA funds update and these are for funds spent, uh, through current that would be paid in the packet today. Um, so currently, uh, we have spent one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Um, those funds being spent on the generator at the community center and fire department, the fence for that generator, HVAC system at the community center fire department, the camera indoor security project and the radar speed sign. Um, there are future projects here, um, I guess I'm not sure what the status is on those at this point, but I will take any questions.
Um, I believe, and Kevin, uh, we are still waiting for phase two of the door and security project, so that'll be another, we said maybe ten or fifteen thousand.
That's with all the upline buildings and more padlocks for those.
All the locks, yeah.
Stuff like that to get everything switched over.
Yeah, so that'll include all the padlocks, um, and finish up the project there. Uh, I know that staff is working on the LED message city sign, uh, with council member Otto. And, yeah, I don't know how you guys still feel about the rest of it, like a co-enforcement vehicle. We, one of the things Mr. Triplett and I talked about was using some money to do the floor in here. Um, because one of the uses for ARPA is like revenue loss, we, we, we weren't able to secure revenue when COVID was happening because the community center was closed for a period of time, so I think it could qualify, um, for ARPA funds and that we could use that and that would, that would save a big chunk of money and, and allow us to get that project done a lot sooner than we were planning.
What else can we use the funding for?
All sorts of stuff, I mean, obviously, anything like emergency management, um, anything that would fall under revenue loss, I mean, there's a lot, it's, it's pretty open right now.
From when, so there's been a couple of different pools of money that have happened since twenty twenty. Um, the first one had to be all public safety, one hundred percent. This is the third set of this type of money and it's a lot broader. Um, from speaking with some of my cohorts and the little bit I know about some what other cities are doing, anytime you can earmark it for something even remotely to do with public safety, emergency management, security, safety, the easier it is to pass through if you were to get audited through the auditors or through the state. Now, you could use it for anything you wanted, by the way, that this one kind of reads, but then you better be able to justify it in the future somewhat robustly, whereas if we're saying we need to redo this floor because we do, because this is a backup emergency operations center, boom.
Right.
You're done. We want to put a sign up because we want to be able to send messages to our residents in case of an emergency, boom, you're done. We can earmark a lot of stuff, emergency, safety, security. Just how you word it and how you figure it out, basically is all it has to come down to, so.
So what are your recommendations for the remainder of the money?
Why would you?
Why would you ask, why would you ask? Then it would go quick, but.
Let Public Works take it over. Let Public Works take it over.
No more money for you.
Because we have to have it earmarked this year, right?
Correct, uh, my understanding is you have to have it earmarked by the end of this year and spent by the end of twenty twenty-five, is my understanding of it.
It's actually twenty-six.
Is it twenty-six that has to be spent by?
Yep.
So we just have to have it earmarked.
And we've only got a little over six thousand dollars right now that's not earmarked towards something, so. According to the bottom part, comes out to ninety-three something thousand and there's a hundred and one remaining.
That's underspent.
I think.
It's underspent.
I think we, if you take those out of it, I think we have close to two hundred.
Two hundred, I think the balance.
So that's include the ninety-three plus the hundred and one.
I believe so, is that right, Jackie?
We've spent a hundred and sixty-five, so if you look at, yep, the, the one ninety-six, five fifty-nine is what there is left to spend, that isn't. fifty-nine is what there is left to spend, that isn't? That has, just hasn't been spent, yeah, hasn't been. Yes, it hasn't technically been spent, if you, but if you include, if there was more to come in on the above five projects. Yep. That remaining is the difference from the one ninety-six to the one ninety-four, is that, like you were guessing thirty-seven hundred for the fence, but it came at twenty-seven ten. So it's your little cush.
I think using the money for stuff that's usable and that we know we need to replace, get done, is the best help for the taxpayer. Buy, sorry, just buying a code enforcement vehicle that might get driven.
I agree.
Driven three times a week, probably not a good use for it when we have other projects. The thing that I don't want to see us have happen is, when that first bucket of money came, I spent a month almost nonstop trying to spend that money, and I only spent about a third of it. So if we keep chucking away at ten thousand here, ten thousand there, or ten thousand here, you're going to kill your staff just by trying to get these projects completed. So if we can take one or two larger projects, and if we get to a detrimental spot, I have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in financing out there right now that we could pop this money to. I don't think that's a great use for it because it's financed under relatively good terms, and we're fine with that. So if we can get some of these projects in motion, I think it's a good use for it. Using it for like the baseball field or stuff like that, I don't think, well, you could probably swing it somehow, I think it's better put into the flooring here, the security and infrastructure projects, buttoning stuff like that up that have been on the back burner for a long time, that it's just like, you know, how many times can we patch the floor in here and stuff like that, so.
I agree. League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust?
Mayor and Council, it's that time of year again to not waive the statutory tort limits so that an individual claimant could not recover, could recover no more than fifty, five hundred thousand on any claim to which the statutory tort limits apply. We do this every year, it's part of our property casualty insurance renewal, just need you guys to make a motion to not waive.
Okay, I'll make a motion to not waive the liability coverage from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye. Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. There's no open forum. Upcoming meetings, planning and zoning, February fourteenth, seven PM, Montrose Community Center, public hearing for commercial conditional use permit. EDA, Tuesday, February twentieth, twelve PM, Montrose City Hall, canceled. Park and Rec meeting is rescheduled to Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, at six thirty PM, the Montrose City Hall. This is going to be their March meeting, since their regular one fell on the primary election day, and then the next regular city council meeting is Monday, March eleventh, seven PM, at the Montrose Community Center. Acknowledgements, recognitions, and announcements?
Josh left already, but I want to acknowledge Josh and Caleb both for all their work that they've done on the Park and Trail Plan. Josh went through just recently, and like he said, he revamped the whole thing and got, you know, all the new information, and so they put a lot of work into it.
I, I wanted to just kind of recognize, too, the fire department and the Hollywood Sports Bar for the, the dinner that they put on last weekend, that was the best prime rib I've had in I don't know how long.
It was so good.
Yeah, it was.
And for twenty bucks?
Yeah, yeah, especially for, yeah, well, the prime rib was the focus of that meal.
No, potatoes for meat.
Yeah, it was, it was great, and, and of course, to, to Alan, too, for firefighter of the year. With no other ones, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero, we're adjourned.